The kind of thing that's liking hockey.
That's my one of eight.
Like high, end of high school.
Your son spends here? Did he play those years ago? No, okay. Because I mean, he's only two years older than me. Yeah.
No.
Hockey's awesome.
No, he just discovered watching and enjoying it. Now he's kind of.
All right, it's eleven o'clock. We'll call the meeting in order. Please rise and we'll see the flag.
Yeah, it's a little late.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tracy. Please take the roll.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Paratchek.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Schilling.
Here.
All right, do we have any additions or action on the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
All right, how about the minutes from the ten, seven meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the ten, seven meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Schilling.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Bills are in your packet. Any discussion or action from the council?
Make a motion to approve the as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
All right, any public comment from anyone that was here that wants to speak on any items not on the agenda? Seeing none here. Signing that. All right, we got a couple of minutes here before the seven oh five. We'll jump down to reports and then we'll come back up. Chief Chumacher, do you want to give us your fire department report?
This might be a record time.
We're gonna go. It's go time.
Don't want Karen to get angry.
Yeah, we've seen that before. I'm just telling you.
Well, here's my report. Let me say, Teresa's reminder caught me out of state with no computer, so. We do it the old fashioned way tonight.
That's all right.
Well, again, good evening there, councillors. Just kind of recapping, uh, okay, you made a typo on this one. Is recapping September falls. Uh, we had twenty-four home calls in September, eleven of them within the city of Hartford. Even as dry as it is, um, haven't been too many grass fires, field fires, knock on wood. Things are going well. I might have just jinxed us, but, uh, but hopefully all will stay in our way. Training, uh, last night, or Monday night, we trained on, uh, last night pediatric emergencies. Just very ones whether it's pediatric cardiac arrest and other type of pediatric emergency. Next week, we are putting on a mock vehicle ag equipment accident scenario out on a township road. Along with humble fire, humble ambulance on that, so try and make it a little bit realistic. It should be a good learning experience for everybody and utilize some new tricks and tools we put in the bucket here. Uh, joint training, still working on, uh, our new stabilizer struts, lifting struts we've gotten. We received a grant for those to purchase that, so allows us to, uh, do some lifting of certain things, uh, whether it's a vehicle lifting a little bit or help stabilizing, so continuing to work on that project. Uh, we got Halloween coming up, so we'll have the trucks and people out and about handing out glow sticks to all the kids. Seems like, uh, always a big hit. We got about a thousand glow sticks in the bag for this year. I think we gave out about eight hundred fifty of them a year ago, so a lot of kids out and about. Hopefully the weather's nice for that event also, so. If you would that one. Open the floor to questions.
Do you think there's been an increase in accidents with all the work on the bridge? Do you think that's caused you any additional calls for accidents out on the interstate?
No, there, there've been no increased accidents. It's made it a little challenging at times responding south, uh, but we've never had an issue getting through. So I think, uh, both the city staff, construction teams have done a great job throughout the project and, uh, been very successful in that way.
Awesome. Anybody else got any questions for the chief?
Do you guys ever do any, um, I know I've asked this a few years ago, any like CPR training that, like a holding a class here that the public can sign up for? Is that, do you guys ever do that or?
We have a lot of them going on year round. They're not, we'll say necessarily advertised for the public. The classes we normally put on are healthcare provider level classes, whether it's our own staff. All the daycares usually are putting their people through because they need it. Then annual, I know, Barb Pollard and Donnie Rawson do a lot of those classes and way more than what you would think are going on. But there are quite a few. There's our individual businesses that need it. Some, you know, do train their whole staff. I know, uh, different ones that, that put them through based on what they're doing, what their whole track. Staff trained, you know, they've reached out in different ways. On that end, we're just usually asking for a small donation, uh, something to cover a little bit of time and replacement of all the CPR donations. Those who aren't cheap, we spent about ten thousand dollars in this last year replacing them also.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, uh, worked with Barb before and done some training there at the fire station, so.
So someone can send you an email and they, if they're interested or they could?
Yeah, not too many, I'll say one offs going at it. You know, we want to make sure, again, make good use of time. We are, if they can get tied into a different group, you know, try and limit group size also so everybody's getting good training, good supervision, but.
Thank you.
We do a lot of it. We're doing a lot in the schools with the state requirement. We have staff going in, uh, I don't know if it's junior, senior class, all have to pass a CPR course. Our staff is going in providing that, so.
Thanks, chief.
Any other questions for the chief? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys.
You bet. Let's circle back to our seven oh five public hearing. This is for a special liquor license for Saint George Catholic Church for an upcoming event that they have this Saturday.
Motion to approve the special liquor license request from Saint George Lutheran Catholic Church.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Schilling.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Mattson. All right, we'll jump back down to reports. Uh, next up, building inspector code enforcement record, report Kyle Christensen. Anyway, stuff is in the packet. Anybody's got any specifics? Uh, did you find out anything on the trailer deal I asked you about or?
Um, I'll have to get a hold of Deputy Director.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, typically the sheriff's department handles vehicles, trailers on the streets.
Yeah.
So usually let me know and then I can pass it on to him.
All right.
I, I reached out to Craig a couple of weeks ago just thinking about the construction, um, around town and what's our requirement for, um, I know we have tracking stations that are required on projects, but to keep sewer inlets, you know, storm sewer inlets from filling with mud and debris, what triggers, uh, some sort of a sock or barrier to keep, uh, those inlets from just filling with junk?
So leave it's a requirement for a commercial.
If it's over an acre, disturb, it has to be erosion control protected and that stuff. There they were cleaning off for the, I drove up there and looked at that. Um, they were cleaning off the sidewalk and they were dumping debris on the gutter line and they had to move, so. But if anytime it's over an acre that gets disturbed and it's required by actually through the inner.
Sure.
Right. Requires permit over an acre. Anything under an acre that, I mean, we would see on the side of each side, we always realize we'll still, we still suggest, um, corrosion control twice, it's just for those reasons.
Sure.
Make sure it's kind.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else got any questions or comments for Kyle? Thanks, Kyle.
Can I ask?
Yep, go ahead.
I was gonna say, um, and I guess I'd ask Teresa, or going back to that liquor license for the Catholic church, have you haven't been notified that that's been postponed or anything?
No, hasn't been.
When I was going over some of this, uh, at home, um, I mentioned the liquor license and my wife said that she was reading off her phone that it had been postponed. And I said, well, if, if it is, that's news to me.
Right.
I'm just wondering if this is, if we okay this, is this just on that specific day?
Yeah, if they move it to another date, they're gonna have to reapply.
Okay, all right. Well, I didn't, uh, and I was looking for my phone because I threw out my calendar. I left that at home, I'm sorry. So, uh, I can't, I can't speak for sure on that, but I thought, I swear she said that was postponed. So I guess we'll just go on the assumption that it's gonna be on the twenty-fifth and if it's not, we'll have to reapply.
Yep.
Okay.
And maybe they're just planning to have a little party in the parking lot. Saturday, could be.
I'll make sure.
Could happen.
Thank you.
All right. Good enough. Thanks, Kyle. We'll move to the most exciting part of the evening, the city engineer report. Michael.
Good evening, everyone. Our report is in your packet. I will start right on project updates on the water resource recovery facility. Uh, closeout work continues. Uh, as you may recall, one of the major pieces of equipment yet to be commissioned was the sledge press, uh, just due to being contingent on actual production of sledge. Um, well, that, uh, commissioning of the sledge presses planned for next week. Uh, so that'll be one of the biggest things remaining on that and the closeout work to do. Um, but other than that, it's, it's moving well, keeping, keeping going and then working towards that finish line. Uh, moving on to Western Avenue reconstruction, uh, the contractor is currently working on paving uh, within the diamonds, diamond trail intersection. Uh, did a couple of lanes today, a couple more for the Western Avenue portion tomorrow and then wrapping it up on Thursday, allowing it to cure over the weekend and then does plan to reopen that Monday. So good work there. Um, and then following that, they will continue to get the sidewalk and get the trailer and then, uh, get its, uh, black, black dirt placed and so get close on that one as well. Uh, moving on to Swenson Park, uh, that one is pretty well wrapped up, just a couple of signs yet to be installed. Uh, did talk about earlier, there's a little bit of gravel, uh, yet out there, uh, just for some touch-ups that they've got to do. Um, but that is yours?
Okay.
Did look a little greater. Um, so that's, that's pretty well done. Uh, still working towards that final payout location, uh, close that documents for the next council meeting. Uh, just with the seed and the time of year, I have requested a, a seed warranty letter from the contractor, uh, just ensuring that should any seed not established, not come through, come back in the spring, that they'd go out and, uh, remedy that as part of the contract. All right. Uh, citywide water model had meeting with, um, the city to review the existing model as well as, uh, the proposed conditions model. Uh, I thought it went really, really well. Uh, existing conditions model, I mean, the system is, is doing very, very well. There were a couple, two things identified that could be improved, uh, in like twenty sixty, I think was the target year. But, um, nothing, nothing major from the system that requires immediate attention. Um, so that's, that's great signs. Uh, and then started looking preliminarily at, um, future growth of the city, some of the developments. We're seeing kind of that expansion lease that we are starting to see a little bit. Um, just looking ahead at, um, upsizing some mains to help serve those as well as is potential future water tower locations. So, um, that's moving along well. Uh, anticipate, um, that final report, pending city comments on the AHR report, um, November, December timeframe. Um, Mickelson shared, Mickelson Road shared use path, uh, continue to work with the DOT for approval on that environmental survey, uh, as well as design survey. That's, that's just needed prior to us getting design, uh, but still are targeting that call, call it November, December, um, design timeframe and then getting in the spring. So, uh, one thing to note too is, is this was, uh, project was kind of made possible by a DOT grant, uh, for the shared use path. Within this middle, we had a phased approach to, to some of these. So we recommend just as we're looking into the next year, just, um, you know, if city's keen on it, looking at phase two constructions, so keep that, um, moving forward since we've kind of started that, got the motion with the DOT.
When does that cycle open?
Um, it'll open January, I think, there due, is it July first or June first?
I believe it's July first.
July first, yeah. So we'll look at that, beginning of the year, so we can, you know, get that phase two rolling.
At some point, I'm sure I can find it and look back, but I don't remember what phase two is, so that'd be great.
So that would be kind of a, um, the north part, it'd be like some of Oak Street, isn't that where we identified first? Oaks and then up by like Sunshine and then that area.
Getting from basically that Oaks and Main, basically connecting them into like Second Street to get them kind of to the school was, was the thought process there.
Basically, it'd be more kind of up by the Sage Horn and Ironwood area, I guess, yeah.
That is all I had for project updates. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh, fencing and gates out at the wastewater treatment plant.
They're getting started on that.
They have started?
The gates are hung, the, uh, the split rock is altered, I'll get them ready to seed and then they're gonna put that stuff up there, so.
Perfect. Uh, date on city's portion of Western Avenue? We got a date yet?
To be open?
Yeah, when the city's portion will be done.
Uh, the, the roadway will be open Monday, the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
As, uh, sidewalk, once, once the roadway.
Oh, you probably said that and I didn't hear it. I was probably reading something else.
Once, once, once the roadway portion is done, sidewalk will be poured, once the sidewalk's somebody in topsoil and get it seeded. So, um, based on that and, and assuming the weather holds, I'll look at like mid next week for.
Sidewalk will be probably one of the last things of the whole project because they need to get the ramps opened up and something like that.
Right.
So we'll be working on that prior to the sidewalk, so.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's probably it. Anything else for Michael? All right, thank you very much. We'll move to the street superintendent, public works superintendent Craig Wagner. Been gone for like, seems like ever.
Only a week.
I know. Just seeing.
Uh, just two updates in my report. Um, like I said, we did get the second application of, uh, man water put down. The roads were getting pretty dry in that area. Uh, the county with a, um, we did get the signs in for the radar speeds. I got the permit back and the county got that taken care of. Um, they were gonna drive the posts for us for the anchors Monday, but they needed to use a mini excavator in order to drive them in for us because just the slope and the ditch, we can't get in there and get the signs, get the bases pushed in. So they are gonna be out, thought on Monday or Tuesday, next week, they'll bring the excavator out, mini ax, and get those drove in for us. Um, and we'll get them put up, at least that one put up anyway. Uh, Lynn Copper's been taking care of it here. We just gotta get letters sent out, which I'll be given list, Jenny, this weekend, which one's gonna get sent out? So we'll get that taken care of and wrapped up. Um, DMRs, the, uh, September ones, we finished those on Monday. We've got all the results back in, so them are taken care of and sent in. Parks, we will be closing the bathrooms down for the season next week, so putting notices out this weekend, letting people know that the twenty-ninth is a scheduled date, wanting to shut them down for the year. Uh, concession stand, bathrooms at the sports complex, they have, they winterized them today, so those are taken care of.
Do you think you could like put a little notice or something maybe on the city web or the social media page just about?
For bathrooms, yeah. Yeah, we put notices out on the, on the bathrooms, so two people see them there, so.
I think especially the walking, you know, like Turtle Creek and those areas. Or people, maybe expecting it to be open.
That's all I got. Now, somebody has any questions there, councillors?
Uh, I, I just, I noticed something about the sign, speed signs.
Straight up the dock.
Yeah.
In the first drag guy.
But on my way in from the west, so eastbound traffic.
The DOTs?
Yep.
I mentioned to them about a month ago that their sign is still not working, so it's been all for late. It might have been a couple, it might have been a couple of months ago, I didn't even talk to them.
Sure.
I'll talk, I'll give Keith Luntzer a call, just remind him, you know, I went to school with him, Brandon, so.
Oh, sure. All right. Sounds good.
I had a, the stop sign on Western, sorry, it's on Seven Street going up to Western. I guess it's kind of covered with some tree, right? It's harder to see, I had a resin up there, so.
Yeah, that trees, we'll get them just trimmed up quick so it's visible.
All right, anything else for Craig? Thank you. We'll move down to finance officer report. Karen.
Yep, my report's in the packet. Um, I've included the attendance chart, so I will do payroll next week's, or actually on Monday, the third of November. So if you want to let me know by the end of October if I missed any dates or have any errors on your time, I'll get that fixed for payroll, so it's right. I do have an action item. Our CD with Relia Bank is up per, is maturing on the twenty-third of October. So I've included the rates from the two banks in town and, um, we just need action on which bank we want to go with if we want to reinvest that money in a CD. This is our customer deposit accounts. We're required to retain the deposits, so we put a little bit, or most of that money in a CD just to get a higher interest rate rather than keeping it all in the checking account for reimbursements. That's kind of the in and out account.
All right. Any action on, looks like Relia Bank is still the, uh, pick of choice.
They got the best rate.
Yeah.
We've done five months in the past.
Yeah.
Motion to approve five month CD with Relia Bank as presented. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. We also have to name authorized signers on this CD, so if you.
And it's been you two, right?
It's been Teresa and I in the past, yeah.
I amend my motion. Motion to approve the five month CD with Teresa and Karen as authorized signers.
What do you found of the CD?
Oh.
For the amount of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and sixty-five cents.
Second. I've never seconded something three times.
There you go. That's a first.
Is that a record? That's gotta be a record.
That's good.
All my name on the wall.
Any other, any other discussion?
The best seconder.
Yeah.
You are a, you are a seconder, that's for sure. All right, hearing none will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Paratchek.
Yes.
Schilling.
Yes.
All right, anything else, Karen?
No.
I, I had, I got a quick question and this is on the bill report. So the Sioux Falls cleaning, so they clean the Gage House. How often do they, I'm just curious, I, how often do they go in and clean the Gage House?
They go in every week and clean the Gage House.
Okay, that's weekly, so, and so that's a month.
And the library, yeah.
Okay. That's a good deal. I was just curious on that.
And then they're, so they're more, they only come here twice a month, or, or, yeah, twice a month, yeah.
Okay.
When they do city hall.
Okay. Have we, I don't know, I just wonder if there's a local, anybody locally that would have, I mean, we try.
We try to find somebody local, it's kind of our time fight. We have a hard time finding somebody to come out from Sioux Falls to do it actually even, just 'cause.
If I know somebody locally.
If you know somebody.
Then I can send them in and you, you'd be able to have a conversation. Absolutely. Okay.
You most are in business for the long term.
What's that?
In business for, that's what I found, is people go in and out of the company business. Yeah, and we, and we definitely want, you know, bonded and especially playing at city hall, so.
All the stuff.
Yeah, so.
Anything else? Nope, that's it.
Good enough. Thank you. Karen, we'll move to your re, or not Karen, Teresa. The other Karen will move to your report.
Um, you got your project update from Michael and Craig. Um, basically, I don't have much to add on top of my report. Do you want to point out that I did send in for the twelfth and Old Street assessment for the property owners? Letters did get out today, the notices to them that says the amount that they're going to be assessed and a notice was put in the paper, so that's gonna be on our November fourth meeting. Uh, as you know, we got a, um, better bid price than what the engineer estimate was, so that coupled with the ninety percent grant or whatever, um, they're giving a real good deal, just under twenty-nine dollars a foot. So that's, and, and you know, we got the real good deal too, so you know, they should be happy with that. It's much better than the two fifty of, than your foot, so. But those are out, so if anybody mentions it in the hearing on that, to pass that resolution will be at our next meeting. Um, just the update on TIF I gave you. Um, at next week's P and Z meeting, Windsor Group will come in again for the creation of the TIF to include Second Street, so we've had everything straightened out with that. And then that too will come to the city council on the fourth for you guys. Um, as you know, we create the district first and then it's gotta go back and we gotta approve the plan. So that whole process is starting now with the creation again. Um, still no word from, on the ASM development. Um, and I guess the kind of last thing I wanted to put out, put in your packet, uh, we had talked about doing some kind of little flyer or something we could throw out to the public, you know, saying that we've got the economic development funds. I did throw something together, I threw it in your packet, just looking for input, that's kind of like what we're thinking. Do you want to see any changes or updates? Cause just wondering.
Craig just needs a city logo.
That would be a good thing to put on there, wouldn't it? See, this is why we put it in here, so.
So, um, my only question was, do we know how we're gonna assess these or do we gotta develop that process yet?
How are we gonna rate the, or?
What's the criteria gonna be for, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not saying it has to be like a, I'm just curious, I mean, I think there's certain areas, so if we need to, you know, kind of work on.
Yeah.
What we would look for in a proposal, that might be helpful to people too. I mean, families are great.
Yeah, I also like the idea of, I'm just curious, like what are other people thinking too? You know what I mean? So yeah, there's, it'd be nice to kind of see. I don't know, it's.
But I think you are right, because there should be an expectation of, just like when we have, um, budget and we ask, you know, we have an expectation during budget.
Right.
And if you don't provide us with that expectation of where the funds are going and exactly how we want that.
Yep.
We're, we're setting people up for failure essentially.
Yeah.
So I think there should be like some type of expectation that we come up with that people are aware of when they present, they need to have A, B, C. I think, I think we can go ahead with like starting to share it. But I think when they come in and say, okay, what do I need to do, like?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's maybe some ROI.
Lots of PDQ. Lots of.
Pretty very quick.
Yeah.
So are you good with advertising it and then maybe next meeting we can talk about?
Right.
What are some of those criteria? So if you're looking at maybe a quality of life thing, you know, we would like to see this, that and what? Or if you're thinking about, you know, something to spur business or whatnot, this, this and that, or something kind of along those lines?
Do we need to have some of that information ready before we kick this out?
And that's why I say, yeah, do you want to kick this out or you want to wait or?
We should maybe have that information ready so that.
Yeah.
I think when they start their fire, it'd be nice to give them something.
Know what boxes to check.
I just think like of quality of life. I mean, that's pretty wide open.
Yeah.
And if it's just like, this is a donation, we're gonna do this and we're done, like, I don't know that that's what we're looking for.
If you guys are okay, maybe when we have our meeting Thursday, let's talk about that a little bit and we'll start a little criteria, criteria list and then I can have Teresa send something out to the council.
I see. So maybe we'll just hold off a little bit, we'll kind of work on the criteria a little bit and then, so. Nope. Sounds good.
This looks good though. I mean, this is a.
Yeah, I think it's great.
This looks good, though, I mean, this is a, yeah, this is, this is a great run at what we're intending to try to get accomplished, so.
Okay, we'll keep working on it.
All right, you got anything else, Teresa?
I don't have anything else, unless you guys-
Any questions for Teresa? All right, uh old business, we've got one item, we discussed this last meeting, uh we, as you know, we have one open liquor license, uh Bob Yelland from the Goeded came to discuss it a little bit with us, we had several, we just talked about it a lot, but we decided to forego making any decision on that until this meeting, and uh wanted to put it back on the agenda and have discussion. It, I mean, I can, I can talk about this both ways, but I would, I would think right now, I don't know that we are being pressed hard enough that, with a specific plan, that we'd want to give that, give it up at this minute, that would be my.
I would agree, I mean, I feel like it would be really easy, all of a sudden, we're back in a holding pattern where we got tied up for years.
Yeah.
And no movement.
Right. I would rather have us have a little flexibility there, so if somebody comes rolling in and says, hey, we're ready to rock, we need to, we want to put a restaurant or whatever in.
Keeps your options open as far, for right now, anyway.
Yep. So do we need to take action on that, or just, because it's setting empty, or setting, just sitting there, we can just leave it set there?
Yep, at this point, you can.
Okay. Is that the consensus, is the council into that?
Yes.
Yep, all right. All right, we're gonna move to new business, how do you, 7:30, I got you by 7:30, you guys. Next up on our new business, we have Hartford Hometown Christmas requesting the release of 2025 budget funds of $10,000.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Yeah, you should both, you should both, you should really both come up and talk.
She did it, she was too.
Yeah, I think Lisa, just, you just bring Sherry and say, oh, my back, my back hurts, I can't get up, yeah.
Sherry Goble, any questions?
Ward one, Sherry Goble.
I didn't recognize Bob back there.
Bob's sitting right behind her, we got Ward one people here.
Yeah.
Any questions or action for our fine folks with Hometown Christmas, and you know what, I've been telling people we're on date.
Oh, nice.
Well, no one shows up, we know whose fault it is.
Work against us.
I just assumed it was the Sunday right after Thanksgiving.
It's always the first Sunday of the summer.
Well, it's kind of, I was close, I was within like a day.
We'll put more flyers out.
I didn't tell many people.
There you go.
Any changes to your plan or new things that you guys are thinking about, not about you, yeah, just curious?
Not necessarily new, um but we're able to keep, like the fireworks, it's a big deal, a lot of people were able to keep that in, and for, and much the same program that we get in cost, which is really nice, because everything seems to be going pretty well.
Yeah.
There might be changes in who's doing lunches and stuff like that, but the basic theme is the same.
Are you finding it harder to get people to, like, I seen that you put out that you were looking for somebody, are you, is it harder to get people to groups or people to?
I'm not gonna say it's hard, we've had, um, we've had one group that's always been there, that no longer is able to, they just don't have the amount of people and stuff, so now we're looking for somebody that'll go for them.
Yep.
For us, and we've already got responses, um, what we put out, so that's really good, so we should be able to hit that. Well, one thing is, we put out, like, we could use more help, you know, from the community, and absolutely amazing, the response we got. So there are people out there, I guess you just gotta ask them if you, I don't know, so, um, that's really good, so that would really be thoughts and, and thanks for maybe next year, this year they're jumping like that, so that's really good.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, we're really excited about that.
Who's taking care of the vendor craft fair?
That's the same, Karma and uh-
Tracy.
Uh Tracy, um, well, they did it for years and then took a break.
Is that the women of today?
Uh no, they're just a couple of gals who are big into the, the-
So is that who, 'cause I have a lot of vendors from the Barbers Market who are interested, but I, I don't know who they need to contact.
Hartford Hometown Christmas.
Okay.
Yep, and then we will get that to Karma and Tracy, so.
You can go right on our website, Michelle, there's a vendor tab on there.
Okay. I'll send them the link, 'cause I've had quite a few emails, it's cool.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
You guys have a lot of great vendors.
How many are you having this year?
How many?
Vendors, do you know?
No.
We usually pull Bakers Center and a plan to fill between the Bakers Center and the Commons this year, so I want to say that's around 70.
They have a count on that, they know how many and all the way in and out and stuff, so, yeah.
All right, we got action from the council on this fund release.
Motion to approve the, uh, the Hartford Hometown Christmas request to release a 2020, 2025 budget funds of $10,000, so motion to release the funds.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Shelling?
Yes.
Heratjek?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Thank you, Sherry.
You guys, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for, it's a wonderful celebration.
It's a great day.
Hey, and you know what, it's the first Sunday in December, it's not, it's not right after Thanksgiving.
I think, you know, a lot of smaller towns have the summer celebrations, but not, I think it's pretty unique to have the Hometown Christmas, so.
We're actually coming home in New York from Fargo, because I thought it was on Sunday, isn't that crazy? We're going up to Fargo for Thanksgiving, we're coming.
Man, I'll tell you, such thing as bad publicity, right?
And of course Deb says, why aren't we, why aren't we staying until Sunday, I said, well, we gotta get home for Hometown Christmas, it's like on December 7th. Anyway. Oh, well. All right, next up on our new business, we have a mayoral proclamation, this is for Careers in Construction Month. I have a nice email from Todd, I can never think of his last name, Anous, Anne Anowski, Anouski, something like that. The Sioux Falls home builders. And they always designate October as Careers in Construction Month, and asked if we'd do a mayoral proclamation, and I said we would, so whereas, Careers in Construction Month is an annual month designated to help increase public awareness of opportunities available in the construction trades profession, whereas, during this month, employers, association, schools are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, local community events, to inform students of the vast employment opportunities in construction, and whereas, the construction industry is one of the nation's largest industries, employing more than 7.9 million individuals in the US, including more than 29,900 in South Dakota, and more than 12,100 in the Sioux Empire. Whereas, we are pleased to honor the construction trades profession and critical role they play in the development of our community, and whereas, through a collaborative effort, reaches policymakers as well as local educators, high school and college students, our goal is to effectively address some of the issues that have contributed to chronic labor shortages and misconset, misperceptions of careers in construction, to develop a skilled workforce for the future. Whereas, the Home Builders Association of the Sioux Empire is dedicated to enriching the educational experience of students by offering them firsthand exposure to real world of building industry through job shadows, internship, classroom presentations, career fairs, student chapter activities, and scholarship opportunities, therefore, I, Arden Jones, Mayor of Hartford, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Career in Construction Month in Hartford, and I urge all citizens to join me in this observation. There we go.
Remind me to get a picture.
Yeah, we're gonna sign it and send them a picture, and they're gonna hopefully put us in their magazine, how's that sound? All right? All right, to correspondence, we have a couple items in there, first one is SMGA, which you know is Sioux Metro Growth Alliance, we are a member, Hartford is a member of this. They're running their annual growth summit on December 9th. They have been over the last few years changing topic, they did water one year, they did-
Housing.
Housing one year, this year they're doing power, or what I would call power, I guess. That is, that's their focus, they're gonna talk electric, wind, solar. And it is December 9th, it's an all-day deal, they have it out at the barn out at Sanford on the east side of Sioux Falls. And we get a break if we register early, and I asked Teresa to put it in so we could have, we really don't need to take any action, but if we're gonna have more of us that creates a quorum issue, then we need to publish that we're gonna be there. I am planning on attending, and I believe, Teresa, you are planning on attending, so if any of the council is planning or would like to attend, we'll throw you on the list.
It's October 23rd, so a couple days is the earlier, so if you want to let me know.
What day is the 9th on, is that a Tuesday? 9th is a Tuesday, correct?
Yes, yes.
I will not be able to-
Yeah, you're gonna be.
Sitting in our climate.
Yeah, you're gonna be sitting in our climate.
Yeah, you could, sorry, yeah. I'll attend, you want me to do it, or you wanna do it as?
We'll do it probably as a group, right?
Probably do it as a group, because I can go on and put the number that are gonna go there, so I just need to know.
Yep.
Who's going to get you registered and send that in, and then just ensure we don't got a quorum either, so.
All right?
Yes, if you can.
So if you guys could let Teresa know, that'd be great. The second one we have on there under correspondence is an invite we got from HADF, I see Amy is here, inviting us to a strategic planning session on November 5th. Amy, do you want to give us a little rundown of what you're after, or?
I mean, it's just basically inviting you guys to participate in a strategic planning session we've done in the past, um, in the past, it's been the mayor, it's been invited along with Teresa, and similar to 2022 when we did the community development plan, we're looking at this as kind of that opportunity again to bring more people in and create a strategic plan, and it's two phases, so one phase will be with you all and anybody else that would be invited to attend, and then the second phase is just the third party presenter coming together with the HAF board and going through the final steps to put the strategic plan together, and then we'll come and present to you.
And the date on that was?
November 5th.
Was that at the golf course?
No, that is our annual meeting, and those invites will be mailed tomorrow.
Okay.
This time, I believe, we're gonna have a pro-framing upstairs in their, um, training room, because it allows a space to spread out and also have a late dinner.
All right, and when do you absolutely need to know?
Um, the sooner the better, because we're working with Sioux Valley Energy for funding for it, because they help offset some of those costs.
Yep.
So the sooner we're able to let them know, the better.
All right. Well, if the council wants to look it over and check your schedules and let Teresa know, maybe like by-
Just let me know again and then work it-
Tomorrow if you can, and we'll let Amy know so we can move it forward, all right?
Do you have a theme or a?
Yeah.
No, it's just general economic development, and the third party is gonna direct the first half of it to try and be an information out of us, and then again, taking all that information from that first one, putting it into the second meeting to further our plans for the future.
Who's your consultant?
The Core Resources.
Is this the same lady that does the ones for?
Yeah, we're gonna be, Paul will be there, I believe there might be another additional person like her.
Okay. All right, questions, anybody on that? Nope. Anything for exec?
I have personnel, we have personnel.
All right, we need to go into exec, motion for exec?
Motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Yeah, I gotta sign those. Give me your deal, yeah.
You need something from me?
No.
Your sheet, you just had a call from her.
I'm on the connect here, is that okay?
So many people on it. Hundreds of people.
Don't those banners look great? Chamber of Jodens, so good.
I haven't seen them, I haven't been down them.
I got it.
Oh, she'll look great. I saw them on Facebook, that looked great.
All right, any action from the council?
I'd make a motion to offer employment to candidate number two within the salary parameters discussed.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote, Shelling?
Yes.
Heratjek?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.